Good evening. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's July 25th. It's 6 o'clock. It's a meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. So as in all of our meetings, we'll start off with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. And now if you would join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, if you would call the roll.
Commissioner Nakigiri.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Reader.
Here.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Here.
Commissioner Dric.
Here.
Commissioner Zajak is absent. Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. Item number five is correspondence. This evening, we have eight pieces of correspondence from various counties within the state of Michigan, looking for a resolution or a motion to receive the correspondence in place on file. So move Gross.
Support Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Plank. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. The resolution passes. Item number six on the agenda is our first of two call of publics. And the first call of public, it is three minutes in length, would remind the participants, this is their opportunity to present information they feel is important to the board. It isn't meant to be a two-way conversation. I would also mention that if you're speaking, I will say about 2 minutes and 45 seconds into your time, that you have 15 seconds left. And then I have a timer on my phone that's going to beep when the three minutes is up. So if you wanted to speak, you should have filled out a card and handed it to the recording secretary. So whatever order that you have the cards there.
All right. Bill Grubb, Conway Township. Yes, sir.
Yeah, if you would speak into the mic and then people on Zoom can hear.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I appreciate your time to allow me to present my township's dilemma regarding internet availability. My name's Bill Grubb. I'm the supervisor for Conway Township. According to the 2020 census and the 2021 demographic data, we have a population of 3,699 people, 1,336 housing units, with a median income of $93,987. We are also the most unserved and underserved township in the county for broadband internet access. Now, I realize we are probably considered the illegitimate stepchild of Livingston County. We have the lowest population, the smallest number of households, and the largest amount of agricultural land of any other township. However, just like in the 1930s, when we were looking to get electricity in our township, we find ourselves almost 100 years later, looking to get access to broadband internet. It is much of a necessity now as electricity was almost 100 years ago. In today's environment, we need it for our health, our safety, our children's education, and our ability to work and function at home. I understand you are looking at planning to provide a redundant loop around the county for schools and emergency services, and I do not discount that as a worthy endeavor. But I believe all supervisors present here today have a better solution that can accomplish that goal and connect a very high percentage of our residents to broadband internet. Your plan, from what I understand, does not allow residential access to the fiber lines, and the cost is multiple millions of dollars. When I campaigned for supervisor in the summer of 2020, I visited approximately 500 households in Conway Township. That took a great deal of time, and at least 90% of the households asked me, "What are we doing about internet?" These are our constituents. These are your constituents also. Sure, almost all of us moved out to Conway to enjoy the rural atmosphere, but as technology has advanced, we find ourselves without an essential service. We in Conway Township cannot fund a broadband network on our own. But with your help, with the funds given to you from the federal government and our willing internet service providers, we are willing to contribute millions, who are willing to contribute millions of dollars in each underserved township, and the ARPA funds we have all received, I am told, we can connect almost 90% of our residents to broadband. This would be a huge boon to this county in keeping dollars spent in the county.
Yeah, 15 seconds.
And in residential growth, which benefits us all. We need to approve this as soon as possible. This is not going to get less expensive over time. Let's make Livingston County the stand-up county it has always been and show we have a clear vision of the future for all of our residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Linda Walker, Unadilla Township.
I have allergies, so don't worry. I don't have COVID if I sound like it. Okay. I am Linda Walker, Unadilla Township Supervisor. Being supervisor is actually the complaint department of townships, and we hear a lot of complaints about the broadband not being available. We are requesting that the county help us by contributing about $1.7 million out of the 37 million-plus that you received. Our board has voted unanimously to put in every penny of our ARPA funds. 15 years ago, we were promised internet to our fire and police. We never got that. So I kind of feel like the county owes us a little something. Our unserved and underserved areas are on the PowerPoint. If you can see the yellow on this map, it's most of my township. The reason our board voted unanimously to spend all of our money on ARPA is the importance of internet for health and safety. And it's estimated that of the unserved population, 38% end up hospitalized because they don't have telemed available. The farmers need internet to operate their tractors, which I have a farming community as well. I feel it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We have funds. We have SURF broadband right at our border. In fact, they are servicing a subdivision right now that's half in Iosco and half in Unadilla. We've talked to them. They're available to come down and get us hooked up. They tell me that they could have a lot of our residents hooked up within one year, and probably the entire township would have internet availability within two years. So it's very important for us, and SURF has skin in the game. They're willing to put in more money than the county and our township would do altogether. So I think it's a win-win situation. So we are asking that you dedicate $1,737,433 to Unadilla. We don't, you know, if you would like to partner with us, that would be wonderful. We could have a partnership between SURF, Unadilla, and the county. But it's urgent that we get hooked up.
You have 15 seconds.
I've asked our police chief if the internet connection at our township is a problem, and he said constantly, and our fire department. So we really, really need your help. We can't do it on our own. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ed Elversen, Handy Township.
My peers have done an excellent job. I feel somewhat intimidated. My name's Ed Elversen, Handy Township Supervisor. It's been interesting several weeks. 10 different townships have attended meetings. Three of the county commissioners have been at meetings that I have been at. Eight townships have come consistently. They represent 50% of the land area of the county. The 2020 census shows that our total population of the eight townships is about 41,000. Handy Township in the rural area has some places with little or no service, some places that is underserved, inconsistent, and sometimes, almost always, it's very expensive for the service they have. COVID-19 has made a major impact on all of you, and you're all aware of the impact, including K through 12 education, who now they call the lost generation, college students who go to LCC in Washtenaw or the other universities, and now people working from home. We need the internet in our rural areas. On July 21st, I was in a conference call with Eagle, formerly DEQ, and only 35% to 40% of their employees go to work each day in an office. The rest work from home. The 2020 census, Livingston County did a fantastic job. Part of that was a self-response. People then answered their nine questions, usually by the internet or by their iPhone. That is a privilege that Unadilla didn't have. Only 34.4% of the people of Unadilla responded with a self-response. When people don't respond to the census, it costs Unadilla Township money, and when they don't respond, it also costs Livingston County money. We can do better. The people of the rural area feel that the internet will provide them both social and economic equity with the rest of the county. Persons looking for a home in Livingston County, per Paul Harmon, a realtor, said broadband now is at the top of their list. If you don't have broadband available, they're going to look at somebody else's house. In your master plan, on page 16 of Livingston County, you promote the rural and agricultural atmospheres for the county. That is fantastic. Handy Township is going to promote that south by '96, but we do need the availability of internet, and we cannot provide it with our own money. The Livingston County Commission has several dollars that you're going to be looking at. I hope that the board sitting here is the one that allocates that, not leave it to the next board. Your IT department has worked very hard on a conceptual plan of a trunk line. The trunk line does not work in western Livingston County. It will not hook up one house to the internet. We would encourage you to abandon the trunk line and then instead take that money.
You have 15 seconds.
And put it into a grant program for the townships. If you transfer the trunk line to the township grant, significant number of residents will have broadband within two years. I hope that we can work together in a cooperative effort to improve the lives of people in Livingston County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Parker, Iosco.
Good evening. I'm Joe Parker with Iosco Township. I am a trustee here instead for Pete Miller. Guess really everyone's covered the reasons why we need it, and I think the board realizes it's important. So I really kind of just want to talk about where Iosco Township is. We've been involved with SURF, as was mentioned previously from Linda, for many years in trying to accommodate our citizens through wireless. And it is not appropriate to be able to cover, but because of topography and trees, and as everyone knows, it requires a line of sight. SURF developed a plan where they could start into our township with fiber, and we've made some pretty extensive progress. We again have also designated our ARPA funds, not 100%, about 90% of our ARPA funds are going to subsidize fiber that SURF would put in. This is a buried system, not above ground, which we preferred for aesthetics and just for reliability. So with that system in place, we will have roughly 70% to 80% of our township covered with available fiber to the home that has been accommodated through either direct appropriate business proposals from SURF or through our ARPA funds. What we're asking for is for the board to accommodate allowing us 100% build-out, which would require about another $660,000. So, you know, I don't need to dwell on the need. I think it's there. It's more of, we have a process in place with SURF. We have agreements with SURF. We would like to have the additional funding to be able to complete this project and build out our township 100%. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Brennan, Putnam Township.
Good evening. I'm Dennis Brennan, Putnam Township Supervisor. As a fiscal conservative, I'm certainly not a fan of large-scale federal spending programs like the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan. These out-of-control spending initiatives help to fuel the kind of inflation we are now seeing. Having said that, the federal government has poured millions of dollars into our county through ARPA, most of which was deposited into county funds. In fact, the county's share is over $37 million. The dilemma is that if we spend it, we are likely adding to the inflation problem. If we don't spend it, the feds will redistribute it to areas that will spend it. So it would be foolish for us not to spend it. That doesn't mean we should spend it foolishly. I hope and pray that this is the last of the federal spending sprees that we will see for many years to come. Elections have consequences. That also means that this is likely the last time we will see so much money available to make life better for our residents. So let's talk about how we can best use these funds to do that. My first concern is with Livingston County EMS Department. I know that most of you are aware that Putnam Township has not been happy about the poor response times of our county ambulance service, especially in the rural areas of our county. I fully support any expenditure of ARPA funds that will beef up our ambulance service in those areas. I appreciate the willingness to allow placement of an ambulance in the Putnam Township Fire Hall as a temporary fix, but the county needs at least three more ambulance stations, as well as the equipment and staffing required to run them. I understand that county EMS has asked for funding for these three stations, and I want to express my strong support on behalf of the residents of Putnam Township. Secondly, I'd like to join my fellow supervisors here and talk about broadband as it relates to health, education, and the general welfare of our rural residents. According to data from USDA's Economic Research Service, about 82% of rural counties in the U.S. are considered medically underserved. Telemedicine would go a long way toward filling the medical gaps in rural townships if they only had the ability to connect. Those without broadband are one and a half times more likely to end up in the hospital because they lack access to health information, health technology, and healthcare through the internet. The recent pandemic also showed us that students in rural communities were more likely to have to leave home to connect to the internet for online classes.
You have 15 seconds.
They ended up sitting outside closed libraries and fast-food restaurants in order to connect to Wi-Fi spots. So I would just like to throw my support behind this effort towards forming a partnership between the county, the townships, and private providers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Handby, Marion Township.
Hello. My name is Bob Handby. I'm the supervisor of Marion Township. Marion Township is located south of Howell and north of Putnam Township. As I understand it, the draft fiber plan for the county will not provide service to any homes. The plan shows the only fiber route for Marion Township is along D-19, which is also known as Pinkney Road, and it goes south from there. The plan does not serve the township hall or the fire station. Marion Township has 4,266 homes. Spectrum, formerly Charter, serves less than half of those homes. MySignal, which is a local internet service provider, has started to install fiber service in the northern part of Marion Township. Genoa Township has a contract with MySignal that will bring fiber to the Genoa-Marion Township Line on Coon Lake Road. This could be a starting point for service for the central and south part of the Marion Township. I suggest that the county abandon the plan for the trunk line fiber project and form a partnership with the townships, the private service providers, and bring fiber internet to the residents of the township. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leo Hanafin, Brighton Township.
It's often said that those who do not learn from history are doomed to repeat it. Knowing that, to help understand our history of race relations in Livingston County, I spent over a year researching it, from the relationships between the first settlers to the Native Americans up to the present. The result is this small book, Brief History of Race Relations in Livingston County. It's based on archival sources from the libraries and from newspaper articles, all ranging back to the early 1800s. I've let the historians and the journalists and the people they quoted do most of the speaking. Did you know that in 1891 and 1893, the valedictorians of Howell High School were two black sisters, and one of them, Lulu Childers, was the first dean of the school of music at Howard University, and Howard's music building is named after her? Did you know that in the 1890s, Howell had an integrated baseball league with many black players? One credited as throwing the first curveball ever? You understand what happened to change Howell's acceptance of that vibrant black community in the 1890s to crossburnings in Howell and a KKK office in downtown Fowlerville in the 1820s? How is it that our county has so little diversity in a region and nation that has so much diversity? How did our churches and community organizations work against racism? This book will help you understand the answers to these questions and many more. Would any of you like a copy of this book? Please raise your hand. One, two, three. Okay. Thank you. I'm glad that you don't want to continue any willful ignorance. Now, when you're done with that book, I'd recommend another one, The Some of Us, by Heather McGee, How We Can Prosper Together. She describes diversity dividend for our community as the truly embrace diversity, dividends of better economic growth, culture, mental and physical health, social well-being, safety, and for people of faith, the moral dividend. So I pray that you and all of us work together for that embracing of diversity and that diversity dividend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Wright, Handy Township.
I like the other people speaking this evening about the loop for the internet in the county. I don't think that the government is the right place to try to do this work. Capitalism seems to work pretty well in the United States. They build it, and they will come. Vitality probably is going to fail. I'd like you to abandon the loop idea, provide tax relief if you could. I think that money can be better spent by the public, and if not, I think the townships through private companies can do a much better job than the county can on its own. Thank you.
Ramon Baca, Howell, Marion Township.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to introduce myself. I am the Veteran Service Director down on 1420 Lawson Drive for the county. Just started in that seat on June 17th. Also wanted to announce that we will have our grand opening for the new building that we had moved into over the course of the last year on September 8th, where the ribbon cutting will happen at 5:00 p.m. And again, I'll provide that address one more time. I'm sure you all know where it's at. It's 1420 Lawson Drive, and again, that's September 8th at 5:00 p.m. I myself am a veteran from the Army. I just retired after 25 years on the 1st of May, and I'll repeat my name, Ramon Baca, Livingston County Veteran Services. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
I have no more cards.
So we'll go to Zoom. There are three people with their hands raised, and on Zoom, if you would state your full name and your township or city of residence, I'll start the timer, and you'll have three minutes. So Alisa.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I hope you're all well. So a while ago, I remember the board listening to you guys talk about the idea of maybe having the Health Department, the new person coming in, report to the Board of Commissioners, I believe, for the purpose of things not getting out of hand. In other words, kind of a check and balance system. And this, it wasn't sitting right with me, so I looked around, and I found two statutes that actually apply to the Health Department. They are MCL 333.2253 and MCL 333.2453. So these statutes try to give the Health Department the right to prohibit many things to the public. For example, the right to prohibit gathering, the gathering of people for any purpose in the event of an epidemic or a plandemic or anything like that. And that still didn't sit right. So I went and looked at not only the U.S. Constitution, but the state constitution, and both stipulate that this is not okay. So no statute, no legislator, no government agency can make these prohibitions, these mandates, for any purpose. Both constitutions guarantee that these and other freedoms, specifically through their wording, these freedoms are given to the people. So they would use words like undiminished, unrestrained, and unabridged. I will tell you this, if you proceed with the idea of having the Health Department Director filter through you guys for the approval of anything, you'll be violating the equal protection clause. This states that the government's job is to step in and ensure equal protection of the law. And it tells all of you that your job is to ensure our God-given rights and not give us rights. So I will strongly suggest that you all hire the right person that will work for the people, really make clear to them their boundaries, their limitations, and I hope you'll look at both of these constitutions again and remember your boundaries and limitations as well. We have these freedoms, and we're not going to go through all that rigmarole.
15 seconds.
Thank you so much for listening, and I hope you all have a good day.
Thank you. Next would be Mark Fostick.
Hello. My name is Mark Fostick. I'm supervisor with Kahaka Township, and I'm proud to stand with my fellow township's supervisors tonight on this very important broadband internet issue for our unserved and underserved homes. I just wish I could be there in person. Circumstances beyond my control prevent me from doing that. Also, my signal I keep getting says low bandwidth, so if my video or audio goes out, you'll know why. This group of supervisors realizes how important it is that our residents have the option to connect to broadband internet. We've met over seven times, three times with IT Director Chris Toby. And one of the main purposes of the ARPA funds was for expansion of broadband, but for unserved and underserved areas. When you look at the map that's attached with the handout there, you'll see Figure 13 shows the unserved, underserved areas, but it also shows the areas that But it also shows the areas that are not eligible for funding. And that is primarily on the west side of the county. Okay, our being here tonight demonstrates that we believe it is very important that the commissioners hear our request and create a grant program that will only allow townships to apply for the county ARPA funds to connect unserved and underserved homes. This would be a three-way partnership between the county townships and internet service provider. You don't need to create a committee on how to spend your broadband money. I know you've set aside strategically $12 million. Look at the millions of dollars that my signal and Surf Internet are willing to spend to make these projects work. This is exactly what Surf Broadband did with Kahaka Township when we used our ARPA funds to bring broadband up to the Township Hall. It was a partnership and they contributed 50% of the cost of that project. When the supervisors met with IT Director Chris Toby, he told us numerous times that he was instructed to work on the Truck Line Project. 222 miles of fiber that only schools and public safety could connect, no homes. In order for unserved and underserved homes to connect, an independent internet service provider would have to
You have fifteen seconds.
tap in and build out that last mile. We just don't see that happening. I urge you to direct your IT department to begin work on a grant program that only townships could apply for and connect unserved, underserved homes in the county. This would allow a three-way partnership between the county townships and an internet service provider. We're willing to sit down and work with you to address the county's issues in spending these funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Cowan.
Yes, thank you. I'm Lori Cowan in Unidilla Township. And I'm Township Trustee on the board. And I just wanted to voice my support for everything that our supervisor Linda Walker said. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, appreciate everybody's feedback. Reminder, there's a second call to the public, two minutes in length at the end of the meeting. Next up is approval. Item number seven on the agenda is approval of minutes. Minutes dated July 22nd, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Helzerman.
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Helzerman, support by Commissioner Griffith. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The minutes are approved. We have no tabled items from previous minutes or meetings, excuse me. So move on to item number nine, which is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved Griffith.
Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Gross. Any discussion? Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am asking that we add a resolution to the agenda. This resolution is in opposition to the state's proposal, House Bill 597 and 598, which would drastically change Michigan Community Health code and would have a dire impact on our county. With your permission, I'd like to add this to the agenda.
So there's a a motion to add this resolution opposing SB 597 and 598 to the agenda. Is there a support?
Support.
So we have a motion and support to add this resolution to the agenda, which all of my colleagues, we should have got a copy, correct, of the? So is there, I'll give a, just a pause to read through the resolution. And well, I would say any discussion, if either Commissioner Smith or Commissioner Reeder, you want to lead us off in the discussion on amending the agenda?
This resolution has to do with privatization of community mental health services. It is in several bills now that are pending. Director Connie Conklin is here and can present more of the details regarding this. But there have been a lot of other correspondence that we've received over the last few months and acknowledged in opposition to these bills. And it keeps moving forward and we need to do something as a board to voice to the state what we feel about these things. So I'd like to have it added to the agenda.
Miss Conklin, would you like to add anything, any detail? If you would, you're welcome to speak. Yes, please.
So these Senate bills have been presented. It was presented probably initially, maybe six months ago, and then it was put up for a vote in the Senate, probably about two months ago, at which time our Senator has stated, Senator Lana Tice has stated that she would not vote in support of these bills, primarily because of it would privatize our public mental health system and change the Social Welfare Act, which essentially acts as the local safety net provider. So any citizen that needs mental health services were obligated as the safety net provider to provide those services. And it would essentially take all of the funding that is in our public mental health system and move that money into the private health plans, which the services we provide are the whole lifespan of, from birth to senior services for any child or adult that has mental health, intellectual or developmental disabilities, autism, substance use services. And so in our community, we have kind of a local system of care with which supports our consumers, the folks that we serve. We provide, we have five group homes in our community. We provide services to keep people in our community. And essentially, what's happened in other states is when when these services are transferred to the health plans, health plans bid on them, they tend to reduce the rates, which makes it harder for a provider. We become then a provider, not a community or a county, local department. And services to consumers are impacted significantly. And then typically, the health plan will make a profit and then it may go to a different, they'll bid it back out. It'll go to a different health plan. And, you know, in our state, we, you know, we're not perfect as far as our public mental health system, but we've evolved. I've worked in it for 35 years. It's evolved over time. We provide not the traditional kind of outpatient services. We provide 24/7 care for individuals. We have a strong partnership with our sheriff's office. We're the mental health provider in the jail. We also have a community law enforcement referral process that if somebody, if a law enforcement goes out on a call, they're concerned about somebody, they may not arrest them, they may arrest them, or they may take them to the emergency room. But they're concerned about mental health, they can do a direct referral to us and we do outreach, which has been key for a lot of folks that may not have come into our office for services. So it's essential services that, again, we provide specialty services that look at 24/7. It's not a matter of people coming into the office just for traditional kind of what people think of mental health services. It's really around employment, housing, transportation, and overall comprehensive services.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions from commissioners?
Because we're going to have a discussion.
Right. If it goes on the agenda, there'll be more discussion, yes.
So I have some questions when we consider it, but I think I'm favorable to put this on it because we're just discussing, do we want it on the agenda?
Right.
And I think we can have the rest of the discussion when the bill comes up or when the
Madam Secretary, did you get a copy of the resolution? Okay. Any other? All those in favor of amending the agenda to add this resolution signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. It's on the agenda. If you would add it as 2022-07-110. So we'll discuss that after the other resolutions on the agenda. So now we want to need a motion or need a vote on the amended agenda. All those in favor of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We have an agenda. Item number 10 are reports, reports from commissioners. Are there any commissioners that have any reports this evening? Commissioner Helzerman.
The primary is coming up. And the next time we meet as a full board, we will know how the primaries turn out. And right now, we're all still happy with each other, thinking we're all going to win. And we hope that that's what happens. But for your edification, Fowlerville News and Views, I think, is one of the best and freest newspapers around that allows broad discussion of topics and issues. So you can get it online. It's a free newspaper. If you go to the Fowlerville Post Office, you can get it. But they talked about, they gave each candidate in the newspaper area ability to give their position. And in this last week's edition, there, in that, there was no I had no opposition. My article wasn't in there. And, but they put all of the Democrat people for commissioner. And they gave the Democrat a position on things. It's my feeling that, and I think my colleagues share the same feeling, that I am a representative of all my constituents. I'm not just a representative of the people who vote for me. I have to vote, I have to represent everyone. That's why I have to listen to everything that people say. And if it is an important thing, I bring it to the board and I explain why I am for it or why I'm against it. And I would encourage you to those commissioners, all of my commissioner friends, to get that article and see what the other other people with other opinions are thinking. And some of those things concern me. For example, they talked about the AAA bond rating in the county of Livingston as being not very important. We should spend down our money and not worry about the AAA bonding. And to me, that's a dangerous position because our county gets so many benefits from having good, if we have to go to bond out, we get a good rate and things like that. It's very important. They had a problem with the veteran services. You may want to read that. That there's so much money building up and it is building up. But I'm sure that when we get our new director and our past director spend a lot of the money, but it takes in the veteran services, it takes a they have to develop their program before they can spend their money wisely. And so, you know, there's just different things like that. I think it would be very beneficial for you to read. I'm thankful for Mr. Haniford that came in and talked about race relations. I think after we had, we've had discussions over the years. And I don't know if he recommended that book to me that he brought in today. But I got that book. I read it from the library because I want to know what people are thinking and why they're thinking. I I don't remember all the points, but I remember there were things that I did not agree with in that book. And I think, but I think that we as commissioners need to know what we believe and know what we think is best, but we always have to remember we represent all the people. And I think, you know, behind closed doors, we talk about what's good for Livingston County. You know, not necessarily what's good for our political future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo my colleague's comments regarding the Fowlerville News. And in case anybody is really interested in reading, there are copies of it on the main floor of the historic courthouse right now. So feel free to help yourself whenever you can get in the building. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to, if any commissioners have not heard or anyone in the community has not heard, Heartland Township, Heartland Public Schools, and Cheryl Stockwell Academy have recently contracted with the Sheriff's Department for a full-time officer, 12 hours a day, 365 days a year, for the purpose of and intent of hoping to avoid any type of school incident in their township. I've been in contact with Sheriff Murphy since the Oxford shooting and certainly several times since the Ovadi Texas shooting. And this is exactly what he was suggesting that would be a best course of action is to somehow find a way to fund an additional person to help the private, the parochial, charter schools, someone that would be a leadership figure in those different school districts. And I applaud Heartland Township and the schools there and just encourage all our townships and schools in those school districts to also do likewise and find a way out of these these fairly large budgets for school to bring a full-time sheriff's deputy into the system. Someone that the children can look up to, someone that they can learn from, learn to respect, and learn how important their role really is in society. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, I will just close out the reports and echo Commissioner Smith's sentiment on the officer. I think I'll add on one other benefit that I believe we'll see is that community policing, you know, we're getting back to more community policing where we get a stronger relationship, not that we have a bad one. In fact, I think in Livingston County, we have a good relationship between law enforcement and the community. But this, having that closer contact, I think it just enhances that sense of community and protection for the community. So thank you very much for pointing that out, Commissioner Smith. With that, we'll close out the reports and move on to item number 11, Resolutions for Consideration. The first resolution is 2022-07-106. It's a resolution to certify officer and employee delegates to the 2022 Municipal Employment Ease Retirement System Annual Conference. Is there a motion?
So moved Plank. Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Plank, support by Commissioner Griffith. This was discussed in committee. But are there other questions, follow-up from commissioners on this resolution? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. The resolution passes. 2022- 2022-07-107, it's a resolution authorizing a letter of understanding related to overtime worked on holiday and shift trades. Uh, is there a motion?
So move Gross. Support Smith.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Smith. This was also discussed, um, in, um, committee. Uh, we have our Director of 911, ready to answer any question, further questions. So we have any further discussion? I have one comment I would like to make, um, before, uh, and that is, I strongly believe that this should go through the collective bargaining process. That, um, and as such, you know, it, we, uh, we're gonna provide this, I'll say, uh, enhancement to the overtime. I think the county should be able to collectively bargain, you know, on, on behalf of the county and the citizens that pay the bills. I, I have, um, respect for anybody who serves in public safety, but I'm, I'm not going to support the resolution. I'm just explaining why, um, I'm going to be a no vote. So. Uh, with that being said, uh, any other discussion?
Uh, when, when is the, uh, this, um, contact renewal?
December.
It's, this is coming up.
23.
23. So we have a year.
Yes.
So, so the question is, this will, at that point, be a item of discussion, I would assume, at that particular point. And, you know, the, kind of our question is, do we think it's significant enough to grant this, uh, without getting a concession on the other side? I don't, I don't know if that's your, uh, your concern, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think it's, uh, it, you know, we have collective bargaining agreements. I believe we should, you know, um, adhere to them. Although I, I see our HR Director on, and, and so I would pose this question. So this letter, does this letter expire at the, you know, um, when, when does this go on to, into perpetuity or does this letter expire?
This letter would be, uh, the topic of union negotiations. As I'm reviewing it quickly right now, I don't see, um, a specific expiration date. We could certainly get that added.
I, I, I would personally would be comfortable voting for it if it expires, you know, at the end of this contract. So they have to bargain for it in, in, uh, when, with the new contract. I, 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 so if, if somebody was willing to offer that amendment language, I, I, you know, would, um, I certainly would support it. So.
I would move for that clarification, uh, that, uh, this, uh, uh, will be until, uh, the bargaining starts.
To the end of this current contract.
Right, yes.
Yeah, support that.
So we have a motion to amend, um, by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Plank. So is there any discussion, uh, questions from commissioners on the amendment? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment passes. So now we have a resolution itself, amended resolution. Any further discussion on the amended resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. The amended resolution passes.
Thank you all very much.
Um, next up is 2022-07-108. It's a resolution authorizing submission of the fiscal year 2023 Childcare Fund Budget to the State of Michigan. Is there a motion?
So move Helserman.
Such. Support Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Plank. Um, this was also talked about in, um, committee. I see, uh, Ms. Shaw here for any other follow-up questions. So I'd ask my commissioners if there's any further questions or comments. Seeing none, uh, this one requires a roll call vote.
Commissioner Helserman.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Zajak is absent. Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Um, next up is 2022-07-109. It's a resolution to amend the job description for the health officer position. Is there a motion?
So move Plank.
Support Helserman.
Motion by Commissioner Plank, support by Commissioner Helserman. Um, this one, I believe there's some corrections that have to be added or the, the, the resolution would need to be amended to have the appropriate MCL numbers listed. And, uh, is that something, uh, Administrator Bird that you were gonna address? Or was legal counsel going to address that?
Um, Mr. Nordford's here. I did talk to our legal, uh, counsel after last week's meeting. There was some confusion about the MCL reference that was, uh, needed to be included. And what came out of personnel was MCL 33.261 and MCL 33.262. Um, in corresponding with our attorneys, the correct, uh, references should be MCL 333.262 and then MCL 333.263. I believe I got that correct, Mr. Nordford, if, um, there's anything to add. Okay. So that would be the corrupt, the proper citations that needed to be included. It was a typographical error earlier.
Just for clarification, I think, did you say 2262 and 2263? Or did you say?
Sorry, I just lost my, lost my page. Never mind.
Because I.
It's correct in the amended document that you have in your packet.
The packet, hey, unless I'm looking at an old version, has 2261 and 2262. And my understanding was that it should be 2262 and 2263. So there would be a change. Is that correct, Mr. Nordford?
Let me just double-check the email here, Nathan. I'm sorry. I thought it was corrected in the packet.
I believe one, one is correct and one is incorrect.
While we're, uh, waiting for clarification from legal counsel, is there other, uh, questions, comments from commissioners? Um, Commissioner Griffith.
I would like to, on point number 16, I'd like to see an amendment that says that, rather than the word, um, consults on the, it says advises and consults. I'd like to change the semantics to informs the Board of Commissioners on general policies and procedures. Rather than the words, I would like to substitute the word informs the Board of Commissioners rather consults the Board of Commissioners.
So there's a motion to amend. Is there support?
I'll support.
Motion to amend by Commissioner Griffith, uh, with support by Commissioner Smith. Just asked the secretary if she got the, um.
I believe she wants a motion to amend number 16 in the job description for the Health Department. Instead of advise and consult with the Board, she would like it to say informs the Board of Commissioners.
That is correct. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Okay, uh, my understanding, the difference between, uh, inform means they only have to tell us. Their, their only responsibility is, is to tell us what they're doing. Uh, the, the other terms say consult or advise. That means they're coming to us and asking for advice. Is, am I understanding the difference? Uh, what is the difference between, you're, you're asking them to only tell us what they're doing as opposed to come and ask for our advice? And so it, um, could you explain to me what, what you?
So I look at this as, um, I know that the Health Department, um, does directly, um, answer, if you will, to our county administrator. Is that correct, Nathan?
Sorry.
That the Health Department actually answers to you as the county administrator?
Yeah, in areas where there's not state law, but clarifies that, then they, it's one of the department heads that would report to me.
So I was concerned with number 16 when it's semantics again, that it looks like to me that we're asking the Health Department to consult with the Board of Commissioners for other issues. I mean, I know they inform us and they've done that on a regular basis. Um, so, you know, I just think that's a little bit of over-management.
Cause it, it's, so you're saying that they should consult with the administrator? Is that what you're saying?
I, I think that is exactly who they consult with. And we've always been informed by the Health Department. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't be informed. But this reads here like we are going to be involved in every decision that the Health Department makes.
Yeah.
My concern is, I, I, I know that COVID's been the topic of our conversation now for months, but the Health Department does a whole lot more than just COVID. So I don't know if, it seems to me like.
I'm, I'm just giving a clarification of what you're.
Sure.
Any other, um, Commissioner Plank?
So Commissioner Griffith, just real quick, um, if it said consults with the county administrator, would that satisfy your?
I think that would be fine too. And I think the county administrator then would, um, advise us and that would be the chain of command.
Okay. I, I, I propose that we add that. To me, that seems to hit the target, um, on its intent, uh, from the beginning. Oh, okay. Good.
If you're accepting of that, Commissioner Griffith, if you want to accept that, I would say we should withdraw your motion to amend and offer a different, um, um, amendment.
I will withdraw my motion to amend. And, um, so Commissioner Plank, are you suggesting we still use the word informs rather than consult? And it would be with the county administrator?
Yes, I think we can add both, um, to sort of, um, satisfy, satisfy this, um, uh, description. Um, so advises and informs, uh, the Board of Commissioners and consults with the county administrator. Is that?
Should be consulting with the administrator first.
Yes.
I would agree with the consulting with the administrator, county administrator.
So we need a motion to amend the job description to say advises?
Advises, and we can say consults with the county commissioner.
I think the, the adminis.
County administrator.
If you want to, would you want to use word informs versus advises for the Board of Commissioners?
I, I think advises is, advises is fine. Uh, and can be consults with the county administrator. And I guess, are you suggesting informs than the, the Board of Commissioners? And, I mean, I think that's, that's kind of the change of the command, uh, naturally what happens.
Okay. So a motion to amend.
Number 16.
It's number 16, right?
Yes.
Advises and consults with the county administrator.
It's fine. On general, um, policies and procedures and methods of service delivery for public health and clinical care programs related to communicable diseases, including pathogens such as viruses, bacteria outbreaks, and pandemics.
So just a clarification, are you, um, so that leaves out, uh, informing the Board of Commissioners, is that?
I, I think that's kind of a natural trans, trans.
Okay.
I think it's very transparent since the county administrator works for us.
Yes, okay. That's fine. So, Madam Secretary, do you?
I think I've, I think I've got that. Um, so you want a motion to amend
Mm-hmm.
the job description for the health officer, number 16. Will now start with advises and consults with the county administrator on general policies and procedures.
Yes.
No. Was consults with the administrator, but advises the board.
Who will advise the board? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
I'm fine with it. I know the county administrator is going to do that because he works for the board. But if we want to insert that, that's fine.
I thought that's what we're seeing.
Okay.
So we've got motion to amend number 16, the health officer job description to say advises and consults with the county administrator and informs the Board of Commissioners. Is that correct?
That's fine.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So the, uh, Commissioner Griffith has moved the amendment. Who's gonna second it?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Reader.
Second.
Can I do voice into it?
Yes.
Any discussion on the amendment? Further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. The amendment passes. Um, I would like to circle back. Oh, I shouldn't use that phrase.
Ouch. Oh, gorgeous.
I asked our, um, county council to, uh, clarify the MCL numbers.
Yes, Administrator Bird had it correct. It should be MCL 333.2262 and MCL 333.2263.
So we need a motion for that, for that amendment.
I'll move that.
I'll support.
Motion by Commissioner Plank, support by Commissioner Gross. Any discussion on that amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We have a second amendment to the, uh, resolution. Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, as I, um, on what we've, uh, managed to amend this to now, I, uh, am going to recommend an amendment to Article 15 of the job description. The draft, I has performed such duties and responsibilities as required and directed by the Board of Health and the Board of Commissioners uh, in accordance with the laws of the State of Michigan. Including but not limited to lawful policy governance directives within the authority of the Board of Health or Board of Commissioners, including but not limited to express preference of work in those circumstances appropriate and applicable, the civil infraction, uh, and appeal provisions of MCL, yada, 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 uh, be employed in lieu of, uh, any criminal enforcement actions. Um, so for the sake of, uh, clarity and consistency, I think, I think we need to make a couple modifications to that. Um, I had, I had focused on 15 and 16 at the, at the Personnel Committee. And, and I, I think I missed the boat on this, so I apologize for the late changes. But it, it appears, again, following the, uh, organizational chart that we adhere to, that performance of duties and responsibilities as required and directed by should again be the county administrator. Uh, not the, uh, Board of Commissioners. And then not limited to, uh, lawful policy and governance directives. And then not limited to, uh, lawful policy and governance directives within the authority of, I would think both the county administrator and the board of commissioners on item, you know, uh, and then maybe we want to carve out, I'll get to a full, full amendment in a second here, but maybe we want to carve out the, as a separate, uh, line item, the preference of the board of commissioners that when applicable, the civil infraction and appeal provision of MCL three, three, two, six, two, three, question mark, be employed in lieu of criminal enforcement.
Yeah. So, let me. Let me, uh, could I ask that question and then go back to you?
Yeah, I, um.
If, uh, well, Commissioner Smith has a floor if that.
Right, certainly I yield, sure.
Okay, uh. So when, and when any of our uh, resolutions dealing with the board of commissioners says the board of commissioners shall do such and such. Isn't there, uh? Isn't there an understanding that the administrator is acting for us? I don't know if we need to say that particularly. Uh, because we, we put a lot of our responsibility into his hands without saying it directly. So I, I'm not sure whether, you know, whether we need to. In my mind, that's an understood, you know, uh, as opposed to a, that we need to, every time we say the board of commissioners, are we going to go through all of our resolutions that says the board of commissioners has responsibility for this and say, uh, you know, you know, that it is first the, our administrator and then ours. That's, you know, I, I, in my mind, it's kind of, it's on, it's not necessary. I think it's kind of understood the way that you're saying. That's my idea, so.
If I may interject some commentary, as, as the, um, person who interfaced with, um, uh, one of our attorneys, Rich McNulty, I asked him for specific language that would, uh, pass legal muster that would allow us to a- effectuate the civil infractions in lieu of criminal enforcement. And so the language that he came up with, although he had a couple of typos in the MCLs, um, the, um, was, you know, is what we are, um, um, uh, reviewing now, I, um, think it is best to, uh, follow the advice of legal counsel on this, on the specific language. That's. And that it's, uh, wasn't provided by Matt Nordford, but it was provided by Rich McNulty.
So I, I was reviewing all of these emails, Chair, and I do concur with Rich's conclusion on this.
Other thoughts, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, just, I mean, I, I think we're. I think we don't want to get to the same place on this. So would we be, since we've just addressed article sixteen, which talks about the, 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 uh, the flow of, of work and information. Could we simply? Could we simply make article, article fifteen under the, uh, uh, duties, skills and, uh, requirements to say that, uh, the board of commissioners prefer that in those circumstances? I mean, they're literally the last phrase of this, that in those circumstances were appropriate and applicable, the civil infraction and appeal provision of MCL three, three point two, two, six, two, and two, two, six, three, be employed in lieu of criminal enforcement actions?
I guess, you know, my, my personal preference is to stick with the legal language that was provided, but if you want to make the motion to amend it to otherwise, I mean, it's certainly your prerogative to do that.
It, it just, the way I read it appears to be in conflict with, with sixteen and several other clauses in here. So I, I think if we, we want to do is give the, uh, give anyone who is, uh, in, in violation and would have in fact an infraction or, or, uh, some kind of enforcement against them, the, the opportunity to defend themselves according to the civil laws. I, I think that covers it. So I am going to make a resolution then that the number fifteen start with the phrase, the board of commissioners endorse in those circumstances appropriate and applicable to the civil infraction and appeal provisions of MCL three, three, two, two, six, two, and two, two, six, three, be employed in lieu of criminal enforcement mechanisms. So we're using almost every word developed by legal counsel. But we're, we're eliminating items that would be contrary to the rest of the document.
I would ask that our Madam Secretary, if you would, um, Commissioner Smith, did you write that out? Could you provide that to our secretary?
I would do that right now.
I would ask, is there is, um, while that's being done, is there support?
Supported.
So we have support from Commissioner Plank?
I would suggest we ask legal counsel his opinion.
Yeah, once we get it written up. We'll take a three-minute recess here, so, um. And, uh, we'll come back to order it, uh, I'll, it will take five minutes, so at twenty-five after on the clock on the wall. Madam Secretary, do you have the wording of the resolution, of the amendment?
Shall I read that back?
Yes.
You would?
The board of commissioners endorse in those circumstances appropriate and applicable the civil infraction and appeal provisions of MCL three point three, 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 three point two, two, six, two, and two, two, six, three, be employed in lieu of criminal enforcement mechanisms.
And that was supported by Commissioner, uh, Plank, um. Are there any discussion on the amendment questions?
I have a question. Uh, is that starting at the beginning of fifteen or starting somewhere in the middle?
It starts near the end, so at the
Okay.
at the bottom of, um, I have it on the bottom of page forty-one of the agenda. So if you look at the very last, um, word to the left, presence of, we're going to put a period and put the board of commissioners endorse and start it there.
Okay, could you read it again for me? Cause I, I
Certainly.
I was thinking that this was at the beginning of fifteen and it didn't make sense to me there.
Okay. Yes, sir.
So, so to be clear, on fifteen, to your point, uh, Commissioner, the the beginning of fifteen is completely eliminated and it begins with this amendment.
Okay, this is substitution, correct? You are striking fifteen and substituting your language for fifteen, correct?
I am striking, uh, the first four lines of fifteen.
Because the, my, my point is that this is something that we're directing to the director. It's, it's part of his job description.
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't seem like, it doesn't seem like it's directing him, you know, it does, you know. If, if you agree the whole thing, I don't, because is, is that something that we are expecting the director to do? That's, because we're talking about his duties. Could you read it, how that starts?
Sure. The board of commissioners endorse in those circumstances appropriate and applicable.
That's all. See, it's not directed to the director. That's, that's my point. You know, because this is, this is his description of his duties. What is the director supposed to do? Whatever you want done, we're telling the director to do it.
Okay, I. It doesn't. I'm probably not communicating well. Can I ask, uh, our county administrator to step forward to the microphone for a second? And, uh, the intent and, and help, help me clarify here. My intent is that, um, there are, uh, both civil and criminal infractions that can be levied. We are, we're, uh, I think, uh, there's support for, uh, focused more on the civil infraction because it gives the, uh, individual that's been cited more appeal, appeal opportunity. And so what we're, what my intent is to send the message to whomever the director of the health department is, is that the, the civil course be taken as opposed to the criminal course.
That's, that's how I understand it as well. And it would be, you know, direction, uh, from the board that when appropriate to pursue civil. I think Chairman Nakagiri gave an example last week's committee of somebody infected with a serious disease intentionally trying to, you know, we would still have the criminal avenue available if it were to happen. Um, any of this is going to be extraordinarily rare.
Yeah.
Um, but what, what you just described is the way that I was understanding it as well, that it would be a preference that the civil process be, be followed, uh, for exactly the reasons that you laid out, um, appeals and, you know, getting others involved.
You know, I understand that, but it just doesn't seem like this is because the director is going to read this and say, this, uh, this is what I'm supposed to do. The director is supposed to do this. It just doesn't seem to be worded in that way. That's all.
Other questions, comments from commissioners before we vote on the amendment? Um, Commissioner Gross?
Thank you. Um. I, I understand the, the rationale for considering this, um.
But I have to state that, that I'm opposed to the concept. I refer back to the last two years to what many of our parents in this county have endured with quarantines, et cetera. And God forbid, there should be another situation come up like that. But I can't fathom that we would ever consider penalizing parents for anything when they are trying to do the best they can for their children. And, and whether it's civil and whether it's zero, it doesn't make any difference. Just the idea that we would consider saying, you're, you're doing something wrong and we're going to punish you. That, that just goes against everything I believe in. If I was a parent and, and was in that situation, that would be throwing fuel on the fire of the last two years. And so I, regardless of how we go about this amendment, I am voting no. Thank you.
Other comments on the amendment? Commissioner Drick.
Thank you. I'm opposed to eliminating the first four lines. It, it's attorney approved. It, it, it says we have to obey the laws of the state of Michigan. It is just fine.
Anybody else?
I'm satisfied the way it is. I, I think it says what
Anybody else? All those in favor of the amendment proposed by Commissioner Smith signify by saying aye.
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 Seven to three. All those opposed signify, same sign, aye.
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 The amendment fails five to three. Any other discussion we have on the resolution, the amended resolution? Okay, all those in favor of the amended resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
The amended resolution passes. So we have another, one more resolution to go. It's the resolution, it's going to be number 2022-07-110. It's a resolution opposing SB 597 and 598, which would amend the Social Welfare Act and the Michigan Mental Health Code. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Helsner and support by Commissioner Reader. Ms. Conklin, if you would give whatever overview that you didn't already give.
Okay, so I, just a couple of things. I think the, the big, the big thing about this is there's a lot of risk with these bills. They've kind of, this happened, section 298, that I think the county opposed in the past was probably about three or four years ago. It was an attempt to privatize the system. And I think the big thing and the big risk is a reduction of services and the array of services that currently community mental health provides, the impact on those that we serve. So people that are able to live independently potentially will not be able to because our service array could reduce over time. That's what's happened in the, in other states. There's, there's a reduction of funding to our system and also potential of a reallocation of our funding. So right now, it's a capitated model that we, that we're part of a four-county region that gets allocated based on the people we serve, the intensity of need, the methodology for that funding, for a private health plan versus a public system. There's a lot of unknowns with that. And so there's impact with regard to our funding and, and not really knowing what the allocation model would be. And there's little to no local ability for us to provide services based on our local need. In our county, we're very collaborative. We don't duplicate services. We try to figure out who's doing what and how we can fill the gaps and work very closely together with regard to that. With working essentially for a health plan that probably is out of state, out of Michigan. They are not going to have the same pulse of the local community that, that we're going to have. And we can say we need something in our community, but there's going to be a disconnect with, with how we're able to serve our community. So those are the, the big kind of reasons. Sixty-three counties have passed a similar resolution in our state. So there's already sixty-three counties. There are several associations, including the Sheriff's Association, the Michigan Association of Counties, that have opposed this bill, along with another laundry list of associations.
Questions for Ms. Conklin? Commissioner Gross.
Ms. Conklin, earlier you indicated that Senator Tice is in agreement with us to oppose this bill. What about our state representatives, Ms. Bowlen and Mr. Bazat? Have they been contacted?
It hasn't gone, there's House bills that contradict these bills. So they're kind of focused on the House bills and then the Senate's focused on the Senate bills that are very, they're competing. And conversations, I can't really speak. I don't want to speak for them. I've had many conversations with Senator Tice and she has been asked how she's going to vote and she's stayed true to that she's not in support of these bills. So I, I don't think I could speak for the House because it's never really been approached because there's House bills that are different than this, but they're still not probably in our public mental health system's best interest either.
Thank you. One other comment, I think, I don't know that it necessarily requires an amendment, but I think in the, the very last, therefore be it resolved, that a copy of this resolution should be provided to the Michigan Association of Counties and any other agency that may be impacted by this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reader.
I can provide you a little history of the last 20 years. I wanted to start a mental health court and I'm still a law attorney. No idea what's going on with Judge. Some need, because I have a son who's by law. Sorry. It's on now. So I have a son who was in the system. And I know that if I had had to try to get private services for him, it would have been very difficult. And that was at a time when community mental health didn't speak the same language as courts. And it wasn't until I started trying to put together a mental health court that we all sat down at the same table and began to say, these services need to be for these people because they're not being addressed. And the sheriff's department began to listen and they began to sit at the same table with us at mental health meetings at the mental health court to keep those mentally hell, help those mentally ill people in treatment, not just in the jail. And that took a lot because a lot of people told me, you're going to put people out on the street that are going to kill people and it's going to be your name in the paper because you're supporting this. But I looked at it as, when I'd see the person come before me for an arraignment in a rubber suit, not getting the treatment that they needed really at the jail, because the jail is not a place to keep people, to give them treatment. Realized there had to be more communication and cooperation in the county to provide those services. And it has happened. Everybody's worked really, really hard to get the cooperation that we have now between all the providers that are here. I also sit on the regional board for mental health as an appointment from this board. And it is hard enough now to provide services based on the treatment facilities that we have because of lack of funds. And there is a push and lancing to not fund mental health as much as they should. Carroll, which is a criminally insane, basically, housing place, has gone from 250 beds down to 100 and some. Where are they putting these people? We need those facilities when people are really, really mentally ill. Not put them in Jackson or in the prison system. If you go to privatization, that is going to be another uphill battle because we're going to lose all of this cooperation between all of these treatment centers here, our sheriff's department, our mental health people. It's a big deal. And I'm glad to see that a lot of other counties have come to the conclusion that this is bad. So that's what I know from having lived through this for the last 20 some years. And I hope you support it. Because it's going to be a disaster if this goes through. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Helsner.
This situation that we have right now, from what I understand, goes back to the angular administration when they basically, I don't know exactly what the terminology is, when they defunded the, you know, how, you know, the mental hospitals in Michigan. And I don't, I don't know what, exactly what, what it was, but there was a whole conglomeration of people in the mental institutions and all of a sudden there's no mental institutions. And there was no provision made for, for these people. Where are they going to go? And basically, I think it's probably, I don't know if you can, I don't know, when you came into the picture, could you kind of to, from the closing of the, our Michigan State Mental Institutions until the present, could you give us a little tutorial on it?
Yeah, I'll be aging myself, but I, so I've worked in the public mental health system for 35 years. And so there was the de-institutionalization movement. And so, and, and that wasn't a bad thing. How it happened was bad because the whole purpose of it is there were people that were living in institutions that really should have been living in the community, but for whatever reason, they wound up institutionalized. That being said, there might be some people that needed that level of care. But what happened is they didn't reallocate the resources from the brick and mortar into the community type services. And so there was again, yet a disconnect and a reactive move of, we have to get people out of the institution. But we didn't necessarily have the array of services that we have now that can wrap around people and to pay attention to, you know, all aspects of their life to support them. And so that's the piece that was missing around this, kind of the system of care that we now have created. And so there, there is, there is a movement to kind of balance this now where the, in the state budget for fiscal year 23, they have reallocated some funding for state hospitals and, because you do need kind of that continuum. And so they have reallocated some funding that will balance some of the, that out. But it has been an issue. But, but people deserve to live in the least restrictive setting in the community. And a lot of people that have mental health issues, intellectual and developmental disabilities, substance use, can live in a community-based setting. But sometimes they have to go into higher levels of care and you have to, you have to be able to treat them wherever they're at. And so I think those are things that have happened that are kind of reactive ways of, let's try this, let's try this, and, and not really thinking through the unintended consequences. And the unintended consequences of this bill are massive. And, and I, if I thought that it would bring in more funding and, and we could do cooler things and, and really support our community in a way that made sense, I would be, I don't care who, who pays the bills. If it, if it made sense, this doesn't make sense. This won't improve our system for the people we serve.
You know, one of the key words in this discussion is service. Okay. And what is, you know, this is one of the discussions that was brought up in the, in the news and views. What is a government service? Okay. And in my mind, you know, I think we all agree that marriage license is a government service and, and titles, you know, and drains are a service. You know, the question is mowing somebody's lawn, is that a service? And then you come back to mental health. The thing about mental health is you, there are a lot of things you can't do with mental health without a court order. The, the state has to be involved in the mental health area because how can you incarcerate somebody or put them into a mental hospital without an order, without a reason, without, and, and so you know, to just privatize to save money, it seems to be very stupid, you know?
And it's, I don't know if it would save money. It would just reallocate all of the funding.
Right.
And it, somebody would make money, but it wouldn't be a benefit to the people we serve.
Anyways, thank you. I just wanted to.
Commissioner Drick.
Thank you. I understand the who might be getting the money. If they were here.
Talk to each other.
The two doctors are talking to each other.
Yeah, but the reality is, is we're doing that now. The, who pays the bills isn't about healthcare integration. When you go to a doctor, you want your doctor to talk. You don't want your health plan to talk to your doctor. You want your healthcare providers. That's healthcare integration, but, but what's being talked about under healthcare integration that the health plans are talking about has to do with, you know, that they're going to be able to integrate care. Integration of care happens at the personal level, not at the funder level. And, and I think that's, but that's something that's been said. I'm, I'm not going to speak for the
So the integration is one
That's, that's, that's a key. And there is the, you know, we'll save the state a bunch of money. That's, that's another thing because we're more efficient. The administrative cost for a health plan is in the 17 to 18%, whereas our regional is, is more like a 5% administrative cost. So that's, hasn't been a very strong argument with regard to that. You know, and, and again, I'm not here to criticize health plans because they have a role in this. And, and CMH has a role. And I think health plans do a good job with a mild and moderate kind of conditions. We provide an array of services that, that isn't a traditional based type unit of care service. It's, it's a, it's a, it's not an hour intervention. It's sometimes many hours intervention. It's, it's daily intervention versus come once a week interventions. It's, it's just more comprehensive in the types of service. And it, and again, there's a place for everybody, but, you know, one of the things I always say is stick to what you're good at, but don't try to do everything. And, and I think that's the piece that, you know, we're good at this. We're, we're not, you know, we can always be better. There's no doubt about it. But this is what we know. This is what we do. And to then apply a different methodology of payment or, or funding or reimbursement, there's a disconnect with how you do that when, when you're working with a health plan.
So the insurance company, if they were sitting here, would say integration, less cost.
Probably. And, you know, they're going to have more cap, you know, they're going to have more capital because they're private. So they're going to bring more in is some, that might be some of what they would say. They bring more to the state or, but just because you have it, doesn't mean you, you put it into a public service system.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Very much. Very much.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and support. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Resolution passes. Moving to item number twelve, I'm going to look for a motion to approve the claims and the payables in one motion. So is there a motion?
So moved Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Plank. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose same sign. We paid the claims and payables. Item number thirteen, call to the public, second call and final call to the public. It's two minutes long. If you wish to address the board. You have more cards there?
Do I have one?
All right.
Lisa Rose Monovich. I'm sorry if I. Hamburg Township.
Hello, I came in late, so I came in halfway in the discussion about our community and racism or making it more diverse. And I just wanted to say, I've been in this community for about fifty-five years. My father was an immigrant from a Middle Eastern country, dark skin. I don't really look like him, as you can tell. My daughter went to Pinkney schools. My son also went through Pinkney schools. My daughter married a black man. I have, I'm a grandma now and I have a mixed race, four-month-old grandson. And even though there haven't been a lot of diversity in this community, I think we don't need government intervention. We need parents to teach kids that everybody is human, that everyone deserves to be loved and respected. And I don't think it's the role of the government to do that. I think it's the role of the parents to do their job in parenting. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. No others? We have. Yeah, go, come on up.
Are you Joe?
I am Joe.
Joe Parker.
Don't want to beat a dead horse, of course. But I did want to kind of close on just reflecting on, I guess, a sense of urgency. You saw on the package and the presentations that people gave that at least Kahakta and Iosco have been working for several years making some significant progress. But those projects took several years to get in place and get implemented. And one of the things that's going on because of supply chain issues and all that kind of stuff. Internet providers, contractors, they have the same trouble everyone's having with getting supplies, right? For example, Surf, some of the products that they've been using for like burying internet in the tubing, they've been waiting a year. They're just getting order in on their, a shipment of tubing that they've had in place since last August. So I guess the sense of urgency is kind of along the lines of, does the board have an idea of when, how long it would be before they make a determination on how to best support the townships with, with, you know, their, the plants? That would be my request because the longer we take, the longer it takes, right? So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. On Zoom, Sheri Larue, if you give us your name and your location, you'll have two minutes.
Hi, Sheri Larue, Green Oaks Township. I'm going to share with you some personal stuff today that that really has hit home with regard to community mental health. Twenty-seven years ago, my son was really, really in need of some community mental health. We had an issue with insurance companies and mental health coverage parity that was non-existent. And the place that I lived in at that time, when I, as a mom, had nowhere else to turn to as I was fighting for my child, it was a county commissioner that said, this is all we got. We're going to go to court, you're going to file incorrigibility. And you're going to make your child a ward of the state so that he can get a bed in a mental health facility. Because with private pay health insurance, the facilities wouldn't take it because the insurance companies weren't paying. One of the hardest things I ever did in my life was to hand my child over to the state. It was not a smooth ride. They, I lived in the far southeast corner of the state and they put him in Pontiac. And we had to drive up there a lot. And he suffered not only from his mental health issues, but he suffered at the hands of the state.
You have fifteen seconds.
Although this brings tears to my eyes, I am proud to say he is forty years old. He just turned forty. He is the father of four children. And he's an amazing dad. And I think that had I been able to keep him in the community, he would have had a smoother ride and not have so many scars. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mark Fosdick?
Hi, Mark Fosdick, Kahakta Township Supervisor. I just wanted to offer a couple of brief comments. Chuck Wright commented that leave it to business. If government had that belief, then rural areas would never have had electricity. The pandemic has taught us that the broadband internet is a critical infrastructure to function in today's society. If we subscribe to the comments of Chuck Wright, we're saying that residents living in rural areas are less citizens in Livingston County and deserve no consideration or help. The same would be said on expanding ambulance service in living in rural areas in Livingston County. No, that simply won't work. All our citizens are important. These, the ARPA funds were designed to connect unserved and underserved areas in the county. Take a look at Surf Internet and my signals financial commitment to connect our unserved and underserved homes is a strong indication of the importance of broadband. The ARPA funds are designed to do this. He's not asking you to fund a hundred percent of the construction and infrastructure. They're contributing their own money and that should say something. I would like to conclude by just simply saying the, this would be the single most important item that you could fund directly that impacts the lives of our citizens in the county for the better. Thank you.
Thank you. You fill out a card? Now that's my, go ahead, Commissioner.
Just wanted to comment. Five of these townships that came tonight are my townships. And you can see that I'm only one of nine here. But I represent a quarter of the area of Livingston County. And Mark Fosdick will be in my new, new district. This is a very, I would just appreciate on behalf of these supervisors that we take quick action on this. I know that we're all working on this, but this would be really, really helpful to these supervisors and to our whole county. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to go ahead and close the call to the public. Appreciate everybody's comments on important issues that lie ahead of us and ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move Helsner?
Motion by Commissioner Helsner and support by Commissioner Gross. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.